Call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for October 4th, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Now, there's one item I want to table. Would now be the appropriate time, or should we wait till we get to item 8A?
Now would be the appropriate time.
I would like to amend the agenda to remove item 8A for discussion at a later date.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Any particular reason?
Just more time. I want more information. I talked to Amanda about it. And I know I was getting questions from other supervisors. I have questions, so it just gives us more time.
I think, yeah, I agree.
I know, we were just trying to get it done for budget.
I think my feelings are, we should wait till budget. That's where we used to address these items. We're only about three months off, I believe, from budget. So I think that would be the proper time to bring it back and discuss it.
Well, we did discuss it at last budget. So it was one of the things that was brought up, and we even talked about and considered and said that we'd probably approve it. We just weren't sure of the funding mechanism at that time.
Yeah, but we didn't budget for it. That's my whole point.
Well, that's because we were going to use-
We can add it into our next budget if the board decides they want to go that route, because moving ahead is going to have more implications than just approving $72,000.
Oh, yeah, Tom, yeah. We certainly can add more discussion on it. I just meant, we did talk about it, had a lot of discussion about it, and we're going to use ARPA funds if we needed to. So there were a lot of things, as you remember, were removed from last year's budget because we were going to utilize ARPA. So there've been several things like that that were discussed. Well, I guess, if this is an appropriate time, I wouldn't mind removing then item, I guess, 9G, just because I think the board needs more discussion on that. Not so much on the resolution, but on, because of the 60-40, we've talked about that. And it's something we could do, obviously, since 1997, this has been in place. And we could, at any time since then, we could have changed it and have that opportunity to do it now. But I would like us to have some discussion, I guess, because of that 40% that's going to go into the general fund that we were saying that we will now be responsible for. I just, I guess I wanted to make sure we have a good understanding that some of those things, like the staff, like the jail diversion staff, and some of those things that are funded with that amount now, are things that we want to do, and are we going to do that? Or do we want to do that differently with, you know, some of the, like I say, just general revenue, like an expense for another staff, or those types of things, like what we would utilize? I know, oh, go ahead, Tom.
Well, I was just going to say, we had a motion on that other item, and a second. I think we need to vote on that and then take your motion up.
Oh, okay, if we want to do it by motion for each item?
Well, the motion was made, and I seconded, so I'm assuming we shouldn't have a roll call.
I think we need to back up. I believe the original motion was Layland Schwartz to approve the agenda. Dan said he wanted to remove an item, which I would assume then would be a motion to amend, the main motion, so we would ask for clarity on that. So you're moving to amend her motion to approve the agenda. Your motion is to remove 8A?
Yes.
And Tom, you're seconding his motion to amend?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's the motion that's standing on the floor right now. The motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Veder.
Layland?
No.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted.
And now, Linda, you're moving to amend, to remove 9A?
Yes, amend that amendment to include item 9G, just for, to remove that table, not remove it, I was going to say, but to table that for a discussion, perhaps next week. I guess I'm thinking, too, we're in this kind of awkward position without a finance director at this point in time that can work with us and help to provide more information, as far as we talked about some of the things other counties were doing. Not that we need to do that for this resolution at all. This is a board decision. But I just, like I say, because there were some comments made, I guess, about more discussion and having more discussion on this last week. I know whether or not we want to meet with the sheriff or his department, both Mark and Nate had come up to us after the meeting. The sheriff had mentioned it during the meeting about discussion. But I'd like the board to have some discussion, really, on just we do, what we would be doing with that 40% while it goes into the general fund, whether it is going to impact salaries or even the shooting range that those funds have been utilized for, or if we're intending to use them for law enforcement at all, or just general fund, you know, kind of the regular items. But I just thought it was something that we'd want to discuss as we take this action, that's all.
Is there, I haven't heard a second yet.
No, I haven't either.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
No.
White?
No.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is, agenda received as proposed or as amended now? Right?
Seconded.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we're now in the main motion as amended by Dan's motion. So we need to vote again.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Public comments. Seeing no one from the public, quite a few online. I can't see if there's any public on there that wants to make any comments about anything before we move on to years of service. Hearing none. Moving on to years of service. Employees with 20 or more years of service. Mr. Veder.
This month, we have for years of service, for 35 years in the sheriff's office, Renee Fenske, and for 45 years in the sheriff's office, Jody Vane.
Forty-five?
And please come forward. Sure can, yeah.
Years of service, that's great.
Thank those employees for their years of service and their dedication to Blackhawk County, 45 years. I see quite a few people out there that ain't even that old yet. Claims and payments. Moving on to claims and payments. This is a resolution to approve Board of Supervisors' expenditures. Mr. Veder? Keeping you busy.
Sorry.
Total amount for this week is $242,734.86. Significant expenses include, for conservation, $44,025 to Shive Hattery for engineering on the Casey Lake restoration. And under the engineer, $49,635.33 for Mile Rock paid to BMC Aggregates. Everything appears to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just an update on our county crew bridge project. They will be setting beams either tomorrow or Thursday, weather permitting. If you'd like to see that, give me a call and we'll get you out there. If you've never seen it, it's pretty interesting to see them set the four beams. This is down on Lincoln Road, just south of Hudson area.
Did you say, Kathy, is there a particular time of day that that would be? I just-
Usually, like, first thing in the morning, so, but it does take four to six hours to set all the beams.
Okay, I was just thinking, we have interviews in the morning, and I just thought if it went on to the afternoon, it could be, certainly.
If you're interested, I can, I will definitely check on the, if it goes tomorrow or Thursday.
Take pictures if-
Thank you.
Yes, I can take some photos and show those to you as well. We have started our ditch cleaning for the fall. As you know, we do that every fall. We usually run an excavator just to keep up with all the ditch cleaning. We've started that. That will commence for probably four to six weeks. We do need more of the fields to get harvested. That's normally where we put the ditch cleanings, is right next to the ditch and the adjacent field. So we've started that work. And then, lastly, a couple of you have indicated you want to speak at our fall safety meeting. That will be at 8:00 AM this Friday at the shooting range, so we would welcome you. And do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Amanda.
Morning. Amanda Fezremeyer, Human Resources Director. Sorry, my voice is a little hoarse. So just quick, you know, we're, as you know, working towards, or working through the various vacancies that we have. Working closely with the Board of Health to look at the next steps for the Public Health Director vacancy and recruitment. Finance Director, we're hoping to, you know, move through that here this week and the next week. And then, just with regards to the item that was on the agenda, I'll likely reach out to those consultants who submitted. We did receive six proposals. So I'll reach out to them and just let them know that we're going to probably delay this until the following week. That's the only update that I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other department heads and elected officials? Any online? Hearing none. Moving on to minutes approved for September 27th, 2022.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Delka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other businesses, a resolution to accept a transfer of ownership of the We Rise sculpture from the Cedar Falls Waterloo 19th Amendment Centennial Committee to Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? Just want to thank them for their donation. It's a nice touch out front of the grounds here at the courthouse.
It is, and Mike and Rory both reviewed everything on that, so.
It's an excellent, excellent addition of public art to our grounds.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 AM on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse. Chad and Tricia Brown, North 809 North Holgate Road, to rezone 2.8 acres from A Agricultural District, AR Agricultural Residential District, in order to construct a single-family home.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next, a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:09 on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, on proposed ordinance number 77-271, for request committed by Mike and Tracy Gensler at West of 12, 806 Wellman Road, to rezone 1.75 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District, to build a new single-family home.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Next, a motion that the appointment of Heather Chindren as a representative for the Hawkins Memorial Library Board of Trustees be approved effective October 4th, 2022.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
That was Laporte, correct?
Yeah. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed motion carried. Motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for an office specialist full-time replacement with an immediate start date, as recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Brian, you got anything you want to add to this?
Just on the vacancy.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Proposed motion carried. Next, the resolution to approve the compensation of Billy Joe Heath for the interim performance of finance director duties at a rate of 44.43 per hour for all her work attributable to finance director duties for a period not exceeding 30 days, retroactive to September 18th, 2022.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
No, just want to thank her for doing that, because you mentioned, too, all the work that she's been doing and for the hours she's been turning in, it's not been nearly what she has been doing, so thank you.
This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that pursuant to the Iowa Code Section 356.7, jail administration room and board proceeds shall be allocated as follows. 60% of the jail administration room and board proceeds shall be restricted and tracked and for expenses enumerated under Iowa Code Section 367.5, or 356.75. 40% of the jail administration room and board proceeds will be unrestricted in the county general fund, and the use of such unrestricted proceeds shall be determined by the Board of Supervisors, and accumulated unspent proceeds shall not allocated for expenses enumerated under Iowa Code Section 356.75 shall be maintained as unrestricted in the county general fund, and the use of such unrestricted accumulated proceeds shall be determined by the Board of Supervisors, and that the Board of Supervisors may, at its option, accomplish collection of jail administration room and board proceeds by employing collection staff, by compensating the sheriff's office for collection work, or by contracting with an entity that performs collection work.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Only that, I know the item two was added, I guess, about collections. And I know there was some discussion last week about collections. Was there anything particular we were trying to accomplish with that addition? Was that, was that your addition, Tom, when we, when you mentioned?
Actually, it was a collaboration. The county attorney took a look at it, made sure the wording was right. And I believe all it is, is the same language. It's just giving the county the option of hiring a collection. Said may hire a collection person. Is that what you were talking about?
Oh, that's what, yeah, I just wanted, you mean, rather than having the sheriff's department continue to collect it, that that's something that we maybe would change? Is that what you-
That would be, that would be the board's option, because as it says in there, the county may hire a full-time person.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
Delka?
Yes.
Layland?
No.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a work session, discussion, consideration of all aspects of the ARP funding.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's not a motion.
It's not a motion.
It's not, yeah. We just move into it, right?
Yeah. Are they online?
Yes. All right, my understanding is that Mr. Calico, in fact, I can see him, he's online now. And my understanding this, is that this will be a discussion between the board and Tom.
Morning, Tom.
Morning.
Hey, good morning.
Can you turn up the sound a little bit on him?
Oh, sure. Let me, hang on. So you're having difficulty hearing me?
That's good now.
Okay, all right. Sometimes when I change from one application to another, my microphone doesn't change properly. Let me just double-check and make sure we're getting using the right one. Nope, hang on.
It's very clear now.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right, yeah, we're good, okay. Excellent. How can I help?
Well, I guess in review, some of the questions I have is that we started off this process a little different, I know than you typically did with most clients, is that we had approved some projects, and you reviewed them before we kind of went on with any type of planning. But, and I know you've given us a progress report, and I think the committee has as well, too, is of where we are with about 18 of those items. And some of them were still, I think, being reviewed by Baker Tilly and furthering that research. And then we were going to begin, I guess, the planning of that 15 million, approximately 15 million that we have for, to allocate in the county, whether it's county projects or whether we considered external projects. So I guess a little bit more information from me would be helpful as to how we go about that or what directions, I guess, to take or guidance that you could provide for us, I guess, in that. I know back when we did the engagement letter, some of that deployment planning talked about educating us, but assisting us in developing a funding strategy.
Okay. So the 15 million that you're alluding to, is that the revenue loss amount?
No, not, no, I guess the 15 million, I was thinking that we had the total of approximately, you know, 25 and a half or 24 and a half, $25 million. And that we thought, and we'll be confirming that, obviously, we're not certain, too, but some of those numbers that we'd spent or allocated approximately 10 million, so that there would be 15 million remaining left for us to consider in some form.
Okay. And so your question is around, how do we go about coming up with a spending plan for the balance of the award?
I don't know, and that's just my question. I don't know if that's a-
That's a good question, yes.
Good start.
Okay. Well, you know, the first thing I want to emphasize is, you know, we continue to rely on the committee when it comes to communicating what projects the county wants to pursue. From our standpoint, we're kind of agnostic as to what projects represent the best use of the award for the county as a whole. If there's policy research that you would find helpful to make an informed decision about what, you know, whether projects are eligible and whether, you know, they might be effective, and we're certainly happy to help with that. If it would be helpful for us to facilitate a discussion of the board or the board and whatever other parties you want to include, we can do that. That's, you know, we don't try to substitute our knowledge for your knowledge, your unique knowledge of the county and its needs, but we can certainly help facilitate and provide you with information that might help in you crafting a plan for expenditure of the balance of the award.
What would be done, I guess, in that facilitation, or how do you see that working, I guess, for us?
Well, we've worked with a number of counties, and, you know, it runs the gamut. We have some counties that we've worked with who want to be very inclusive and want to give lots of different stake, you know, potential stakeholders and entities with interest, individuals with interest, an opportunity to weigh in on the use of the award. We have some counties where the process has been less inclusive, where, you know, there's a feeling, hey, we were elected to represent our constituents, and we feel empowered and qualified to make that decision. So it kind of runs the gamut there, runs the continuum. So the first thing that I would want to do is understand how you, as the supervisors, you know, where you kind of want to fall on that continuum. And then we can come up with a process that, you know, fits your unique circumstances.
You mentioned at one point in time, and I'm not even certain when it was, different conversations we've had as far as projects and things that are going on in the Midwest or this region, or something like that, that would help us, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay, and?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, we're really at a, it's a great, you know, a great time to sort of reflect a little bit on what's going on across the country with use of the American Rescue Plan Award. In April of this year, you may recall, every single award recipient, so pretty much every city and county in the entire United States, was required to submit their project and expenditure award. Bigger entities like yours have to submit the project and expenditure report quarterly, but the smaller entities only have to submit yearly. But April was the point at which all quarterly and yearly reporters had to submit. So the Treasury, very kindly, US Treasury kindly, shared information from that reporting cycle. And I was told that this might be of interest to you, so I've put together a little bit of facts and figures based on our research from those results. So the first kind of takeaway is, it's still really early in the game, folks. Out of the entire first tranche, because remember, the American Rescue Plan funds were, are being, well, they were, distributed in two tranches, one a year ago, and then one just here recently. So they, looking only at that first tranche of funds, only 30% of it has been expended to date. So 70% still sitting out there unexpended. So it's still, still kind of early in the process. The average number of projects initiated or completed is 1.5. 42% of the recipients are reporting no projects at this point. So like I say, still, still very early. If you focus in on just the Midwest, the expenditures have been focused primarily on the negative economic impacts expenditure category. But that's really influenced heavily by the state contributions to the unemployment insurance trust funds. If you, that's a big lug of money. If you take that money out, then the largest expenditure category, not too surprisingly, is revenue replacement, right? The money that you could use to replace lost revenue. And so it's not too surprising that that then becomes the major expenditure category. And, you know, that pattern is really, while we see it in the Midwest, that pattern pretty much continues across the country with revenue replacement at this point being the largest category. Which makes sense, because revenue replacement, right, that's the easiest money to spend and addresses the most immediate needs of municipalities who, you know, lost money during the height of the pandemic. And so it makes sense that, you know, here in this early stage, that's where most of the expenditures would occur. A lot of entities like, like Blackhawk County are still building, you know, determining eligibility and building up to, you know, to get prepared to expend the rest of the funds. And then I've got some lists of the most common expenditure categories, which gives you just an idea of kind of where other entities are spending their money. And I've, we've looked at it a couple different ways. The first is, you know, where do we see the most projects? And the other is, where do we see the most dollars? Because sometimes, right, we might have some categories where you don't have as many projects, but the dollar value of those projects is very high. So this gives you a little sense of where the activity is occurring. So if I just look at the number of projects, the areas where we see the most activity are other public health services, prevention in congregate settings. So this is like nursing homes, prisons, jails, dense work sites, schools, et cetera. Assistance to impacted nonprofit organizations. Drinking water, transmission and distribution, clean water, stormwater, and then, of course, administrative expenses, right? Everybody's, everybody's got administrative expenses to pay. So that's if you look at it just by number of projects. Now, if I look at it by the dollars being expended, the most common category- Now, if I look at it by the dollars being expended, the most common categories are medical expenses, which makes sense, right? There are a lot of, lot of medical expenses incurred initially. Other COVID-19 public health expenses, similar category, and then the contributions to the unemployment trust funds, which we talked about a moment ago. Loans and grants to mitigate financial hardship, household assistance, so rent, mortgage, and utility aid. Aid to travel, aid to tourism, travel, and hospitality, actually made it into one of the, one of the major dollar categories. And then public sector workforce payroll and benefits for public health, safety, and human services workers. Now, there's three categories that made the list in both number of projects and dollars spent. So I kind of kept these to the end, because maybe this is, this is the highlight. So the three that we saw that were high in both number of projects and dollars are economic assistance, economic impact assistance, and then premium pay for public sector workers, and then, not too surprisingly, provision of government services, because that's again where, you know, the revenue loss money is spent. Any questions on that?
No, but I do have a question about your risk assessment. Could you explain that to us again? Because I'm, I'm paying attention to that number.
I'm sorry, the what number?
The risk assessment that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So you're talking about the burden of proof?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got, I've got quite a bit I want to say about the burden of proof. Because I think in it, for you, and then for a lot of other clients that we've worked with, particularly governing bodies, they, they do a lot of questions around that and what it means. So if you'll bear with me for just a second, let me talk a little bit about, about it. I think the, the thing that I want to start with is, I've experienced this before with some other governing bodies, where there's a sense that if, if a project falls fairly high on our burden of proof continuum, that somehow that's ineligible project. And I want to emphasize that a high burden of proof does not mean that a project is eligible, is not eligible. What the burden of proof is intended to do is, it's an indicator of the degree to which the county itself must assume responsibility for determining eligibility. So the county itself has, is assuming responsibility for determining eligibility. And to understand that, you have to kind of understand the way the final rule for the American Rescue Plan was set up. So the final rule delineates, or numerates, as they call it, a number of eligible uses. But throughout the final rule, there is emphasis on the fact that the enumerated uses in the rule are not meant to be an exhaustive list, that it is anticipated that there will be uses of the award beyond what's enumerated specifically in the act. And towards that end, the rules give out a framework by which recipients, like the county, can determine whether something is eligible if it is not otherwise enumerated. And it's, it's essentially a three-prong test. They ask you to consider, what is the pandemic-related harm that you seek to address? And then, how does the expenditure that you're anticipating address the pandemic-related harm that you've identified? And then lastly, is the expenditure a proportional way to address the pandemic-related harm? So this is the, you know, we don't want people, you know, killing the proverbial gnat with the proverbial sledgehammer, right? We, you know, we want you to spend enough money to address the pandemic-related harm, but not a whole lot more money than is necessary. So that's the three-prong test. Now, they add, they add to that three-prong test for capital expenditures over $1 million that are being done in the public health or the negative economic impact categories, expenditure categories. And the addition there is, they go, ask you to go further and do a comparison of the proposed expenditure to two other capital expenditures that might be employed to address the pandemic-related harm. There's a higher level of, of burden of proof for capital projects over $1 million, and you see that, of course, in our continuum. So I think the important thing to remember here is that when it comes to eligibility, it's not a black and white task. It truly is, you know, shades of gray. And in the end, it becomes a question of comfort, right? How comfortable are you that you, you know, that we, that we, working together, have met the burden of proof responsibility? And what complicates that, of course, is that everyone's comfort level is going to be different. You know, we're all different people, we all come from things with different backgrounds, we have different, you know, just, we're all wired with different ability and willingness to take risk. So there's just no getting around dialogue. You know, as we make decisions here, you know, obviously, we're going to have to talk about it, and then, you know, come to consensus on, you know, whether we feel comfortable that we've met that burden of proof. So our role in this process is to build the best, best possible case for eligibility and advise you on the risks, so that you can make an informed decision. That's what we're all about, is trying to get you to the point where you feel, at least, that you have all the facts necessary to make an informed decision on whether you want to proceed with the project. You know, and, and as we've said at the very beginning, when we were hired, and we, you know, if there's something you want to do, we're going to try our darndest to get you to yes, understanding that if we feel like we absolutely can't get to there, we're going to tell you so.
You brought up four points, son. And if it's a capital improvement project with a projected cost over $1 million, you have four points. These are public dollars, I want to spend these wisely. I mean, there's one project that initially was proposed at $1 million, we haven't even broken ground, and it's already at 1.8. That's a fifth point for me. If I see these projects doubling in cost, exceeding cost as presented, it causes me great concern. Because this isn't an endless pot of money. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, I thought we were behind the eight ball, but I'm, it sounds like we have time. But I think we are getting to a point where we need to identify more projects and then establish priorities for these projects. And I see projects on the list that I don't think, I mean, I'm just one. But I see projects on the list that I don't think the majority of the board support, and it's time we remove them from the list.
From, from that list of 18?
I don't know how many are on the list. The jail expansion is the perfect example.
The older list with phase one and phase two and some of those things, but.
Because I don't even know why our committee's spinning the wheel on those when there's no support, I don't believe, from the board, and that's, it's my guess and opinion.
I don't think a questionnaire, I don't think it ever got to that point where it was a questionnaire or anything submitted on that. That was, the sheriff kind of brought it to our attention, I don't think it moved.
I believe we have an evidence facility questionnaire.
That one, oh, the evidence intake building? Yeah, definitely that one was a project.
And there are a number of, in fact, I'd encourage attendance at today's ARP committee meeting, there, there were a number of projects for which there, there were questionnaires that had been, that had been prepared but were not submitted for one reason or another. There's going to be some discussion on those today. But then there are also a number of projects for which questionnaires were never prepared to begin with, which were brought before the board one way or another on phase one, or I believe phase two. And the, kind of the overarching theme, at least from the committee's perspective, is, and I think this goes to Supervisor Truca's point, is that the, the committee, and for that matter, anybody else involved, needs direction from the board as to what the board wants to do. The board has to decide, then we can look into eligible uses within those categories of what the board wants to do. Of course, we can, we can look into what uses would be eligible as part of helping the board decide what its priorities are. So I hope that kind of addresses your point, Dan.
My question to Dan is, did you mean the jail expansion, or did you mean that evidence intake facility?
Both.
Oh, because I was going to say, one's on was a project, I think, and one was not. It was just kind of a pending status for us.
I, I have a question for, for Tom Calico. My number one priority with, with the remaining funds is, is a new public health clinic. And I understand that there's been some concern about, over, over the eligibility of that, and I'm just wondering if you could kind of talk us through some of that, and talk us through some of the things that would make it more eligible, and maybe it's just a misunderstanding of kind of the burden of proof.
So, you know, a new public health clinic would be a capital expenditure, I presume, you know, we would target it somewhere in the public health expenditure category. It would, I'm assuming it's going to be over $1 million, so it would trigger the need to prepare what's called a written justification, right? So it answers the three framework questions, plus requires the comparison to other potential capital expenditures. So it's going to fall, you know, very high on the burden of proof. We haven't evaluated, I think we certainly could, and would likely, you know, be, like, I think we would likely show that it, you know, we could prepare an eligibility for it, but like I say, it's going to go up towards the, the upper end of the burden of proof.
So it's not that it's not an eligible project, it's just that it takes more work on the justification to be prepared to do it?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And there's, you know, there's a couple of, there's just a couple more points, if you bear with me, that I wanted to make, kind of on this broad topic of burden of proof. And maybe now's a good time to make it, so that, because it may inform on your next few questions. So, you know, in addition to looking at the burden of proof on a project-by-project basis, we're a big believer in looking at the burden of proof across your entire portfolio of American Rescue Plan projects, right? It's kind of like any kind of, like an investment portfolio, right? You want to balance your risk. So I think it's helpful to think, you know, for the county, where do we want to be in terms of our portfolio? Kind of where's our average? Do we, you know, do we want to have just maybe one or two kind of high-dollar projects that are up towards the higher burden of proof, with a bunch of stuff then that's lower? Yeah, what kind of overall, you know, level of risk are we going to take? And that's helpful, because it can help you think about risk mitigation measures. So for example, you know, if we've got some projects that are up there on a higher burden of proof, then, you know, we can think about, you know, do we want to have, you know, maybe bolster our reserves for a period of time? So we think that's helpful. But the other thing that I think is really important for you to understand is kind of how enforcement is going to work. So I think most all of you are aware that when you spend federal funds, it can trigger a, what's called a single audit, which is a supplement to your annual audit, and it's looking at your administration of your federal funds. And it gets triggered at $750,000. So given your award, we can pretty much count on the fact that you're going to be doing a single audit every year while you're spending down your award. Now, what's, what I really want to understand is what your auditor is going to be looking for when they prepare that single audit. Your auditor is not going to be second guessing your conclusions as to eligibility. Let me say that again. Your auditor is not going to second guess your conclusions as to eligibility. That's not their job. What they're going to look at is, have you met all the procedurally required steps? That, so procurement, if a written justification was required, did you prepare one? You know, all those kinds of things, that's what they're going to look at, is did you follow the act and its rules procedurally? The only entity that might come in and look at your justification and weigh in as to whether or not they agree is the US Treasury. And the US Treasury has said in the rule, and I've been very public about this, they've said that they're going to employ a risk-based methodology for enforcement. Now, what does that mean? Well, you know, those of us who've worked in and around the auditing world, you know, understand what a risk-based methodology means, is they're going to take a look and say, okay, where are, you know, what are the kinds of projects that have the most like, you know, the greatest probability of mistakes or abuse? And they're going to zero in on those kinds of projects. They're also going to focus in on larger dollar projects and larger dollar recipients, right? Because that's where they can make the greatest impact with their enforcement measures. And then they're probably going to do some random sampling. So it's impossible to say whether one or any, one or more of Blackhawk County's ARPA projects will ever get examined by the US Treasury. But I think we can say, based on the language in the rule, that capital expenditures over $1 million are going to be pretty high up on their target list. They, there was a big change between the interim rule and the final rule as it relates to these capital projects, and they tightened up, or really increased, the burden of proof for these capital projects. To me, that was a pretty clear message, that this is an area where Treasury is likely to focus. So I think, I just wanted to share that information with you, because I think it kind of is helpful as you think about how you want to proceed.
Craig? Mr. Chair? May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Tom, along those lines, when you think of Treasury looking at projects of a significant size, and, you know, obviously, they prepared a category for projects that are over $1 million, capital projects, but still, when we're looking at scale across the country, a Blackhawk County million-dollar project isn't going to rank up there with multimillion-dollar projects by larger entities. So would you see a Blackhawk County project being looked at more in line with them looking for large projects, or would it be more likely that it would be looked at in their random sampling?
Yeah, it's an excellent question, and, and certainly one we can only speculate at, right? We can't know. But you're right, I mean, you know, one of our clients, for example, is Minneapolis. Well, you know, their projects are way bigger than yours. So, yeah, I, and you're right, across, across the grand scheme of things in the country, Blackhawk County's award and the size of projects that we've contemplated so far, well, even, you know, if you spent every dollar of what you got on a single project, which I know you're not going to do, but if you were, I mean, even then, you know, you know, the Los Angeleses and Chicago's of the world are going to have much bigger projects. So, yeah, I think, I think when you think about a risk-based model, and a risk-based model looking at those expenditure categories that might have the greatest opportunity for error or abuse, and then also looking at where the big projects are, it's certainly possible that Blackhawk County will not rise up to the point where it gets grabbed by Treasury as one of the, you know, one of the areas they want to examine, but we can only speculate at that. We, we can't know that for certain.
Well, your comments have been very reassuring as to what we can and cannot do. And it's interesting how the final rule has changed in comparison to the initial rule.
Yeah, yeah.
Only on those, those larger ones.
Right. And it just seems like it's sensible that public health should be a project we should be able to proceed with without too much concern.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've worked on a number of projects already and continue to across the country where they're not enumerated uses, they're large capital expenditures, this does come up quite often. You're not alone in considering these kinds of projects. I guess I just, you know, I want to go back to, you know, what I said at the very beginning, and the fact that something rises up high on the burden of proof continuum does not mean it's ineligible. It is just our way of helping you make an informed decision, understanding, you know, what the burden of proof is, and then, you know, you have to come to a conclusion as to whether you feel comfortable that you've met that burden of proof. And, and as you've seen already, and you'll continue to see, I mean, we work hard with you to prepare, you know, particularly for these capital expenditures, a, a very thorough written justification, so that you can then look at that and then make a decision, okay. written justification so that you can then look at that and then make a decision, okay, yeah, do we feel, you know, we've met it or not?
So, Tom, example of things that we can do to lessen the burden of proof, say like if a new public health clinic was located in a targeted census tract, is that, you know, example of one of the things that this further mitigates risk?
You know, serving impacted populations does not provide eligibility unto itself, but it does enhance an otherwise eligible project.
Thank you.
Well, Tom, I guess I have a question. And I've asked Caitlin, our interim director, currently from the Health Department. There've been several publications that we see from ISAC, which is a state association for, of counties, and NACO as well from the national level, and seeing some of the projects that they're doing in other states and in other communities. And obviously, health-related, and they're using the ARPA funds. And so I asked her if she'd speak specifically to the things that the Health Department brought to my attention the other day and see if there are, what your thoughts are on these.
Good morning, Tom. So our director, Nafisa Cissé Ambonia, she shared this in an email to the board of supervisors. So she has a couple of examples of what the National Association of Counties have shared within their newsletters and publications and things. So a few of those examples are focusing on equity issues. So obviously during the pandemic, health equity became much more visible to a broader population than it was previously. So this could include violence, community violence prevention initiatives. It could include supporting families and children. A lot of the, a lot of the health-related conditions that were evident before the pandemic were really exacerbated during the pandemic. This includes mental health. That includes food insecurity. In fact, I was in a meeting the other day where a representative from the Food Bank said, I think we're seeing more food insecurity now than we did at pre-pandemic levels. It could include other health equity or equity-related initiatives, including violence, but other access to care was definitely something that we saw as you talk about the, the, what was the term you used? Pandemic-related harm? These are all things that we've seen as pandemic-related harm. So those are a couple of examples. And Nafisa shared a handout, and I apologize that you're not gonna have it electronically, but I did bring some copies just to share here that I'll let the board take a look at. So those are some examples of what we've seen other public health organizations focusing on or other counties focusing on. Linda, did you want me to, or Supervisor Leland, did you want me to say more?
I don't know. I was gonna say, do you need more information than that, Tom, to like help us or assist a little bit, I guess, with next steps or these types of programs?
So, and I'm sorry, the young lady from Health Department, what is your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Caitlin Emmerich.
Caitlin, so Caitlin, I mean, your remarks could have been drawn almost exactly from the American Rescue Plan Act itself and rules. So, I mean, on, you know, on first blush, everything you mentioned, I think, would be eligible. Now, what I want to say is we have a process that we go through and we do it for a reason, right? And it's to protect you and make sure that, you know, you're using the money properly. So we would still, of course, defer to going through our full eligibility review process. But based on its face, I, you know, I think it's likely that pretty much everything, everything that you've mentioned would be qualified, assuming, you know, remember, remember there are, you know, the five overarching things that we can't do. And then there's also, you know, the limit on reimbursement. So as long as we're not reimbursing something before March 3rd, 2020, you know, and then it wouldn't, it wouldn't, none of the things you mentioned would violate the other five overarching. So, but yeah, those all sound like eligible uses, and we would just be happy to run through our eligibility review process.
If I may, could I just ask a question of Tom? So, you know, we, we look at the public health system in terms of community priorities, like the ones I just mentioned. But then we also look internally at agency priorities of things that we've seen happen throughout the pandemic. And the public health workforce is really one of those things that has been impacted pretty strongly. About a third of our public health workforce is intending to leave their job over the next year. About 5% are gonna retire, and about 27% say they're gonna leave for some other reason. That other reason, or those other reasons include pay, include work overload or burnout, include lack of opportunity for advancement, stress, and organizational climate and culture. This is from a national public health survey. So, you know, kind of looking internally, if there are things that we can do to support our staff, to retain them so we don't follow along with the rest of the nation with the workforce challenges that we anticipate continuing to see. You know, I look at what the staff priorities are versus the community priorities. The staff priorities are definitely the space. So the public health clinic, like you're talking about, having the space that we need to do our jobs well and to provide efficient services. They're the premium pay. I can't, can't say, haven't heard about that from staff. And again, to kind of minimize those reasons for leaving.
The deal with, runs the whole gamut of society right now.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not, I don't think you're gonna solve anything by throwing money at it.
Well.
My feeling.
Yeah, I understand there's that perspective. I think what we, what we just have to be cognizant of is we know, we have surveys that are telling us that people are leaving the public health profession, and the top of the list is pay.
They just had it on the TV this morning. Airlines, they're, they're suffering big time. They're leaving because of stress and all this. It, like I said, it's the whole gamut, and it's, all goes back to really the start of this pandemic causing all these problems. And, and then the number of people that didn't return to work, the number of people that are still staying at home is astronomical. That could, that could solve a lot of our problems.
Yeah, I'm not an economist. I don't pretend to know what the answer is. I just know that it's in my best interest to look at the people that we have and try to retain them if possible. So looking for solutions.
Appreciate your comments because that's what we want to do with this market assessment as well, is making sure that we're looking and taking care of our people too, so.
So anyway, that's kind of just my comments about that.
We appreciate that, yeah, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Hey, Tom, another question is, some of these projects that we had, or I don't know if they're still on the table, I believe they are, a couple buildings that we were gonna get some of the people that are in here outside and move to a different location so there's more room in here in the courthouse, making it more user-friendly and probably healthier situations too, especially when it comes to, you know, pandemics and stuff like that occurring. The people would be out, outside, working in a different area in two or three different departments.
And, Tom, I believe Supervisor White is referring to the space enhancement study, and in particular, the possibly moving out the elections office.
That's one of them.
Yeah, yeah, I've read the space, space utilization study, I came to their facility study. At this point, the only project, I think that's related to that, I think it was in that study, the only facility project that we've been asked to evaluate is the evidence intake facility. We haven't been asked to evaluate anything specifically related to that study at this point. Happy to do so.
So you read the study, or you are familiar with the study, but as far as any submission of projects for that, we'd have to do that and submit it to you with the question?
Yeah, we talked about that study early on, and I've said that we were provided a copy, which we did review. But at this point, we haven't been asked to actually evaluate any projects resulting from that study.
Okay, there now.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I do have a question on, and if there are others that are fine too, what I was just gonna say on the last, the summary that you provided to us, I think there were three projects on there that were still under exploration by Baker Tilly. And I didn't know if those had been completed because there were the evidence processing facility, I think elevator improvements, as well as the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. I'm assuming those all will retain a 10 just because of the level of proof that we have to provide. But at some point, you'll tell us that we have met the requirement from Baker Tilly's perspective, or where are the?
Yeah. I can, I can give you a quick update on where those are. Excuse me. On the evidence processing facility, we got this week the Shai Hattery review. And based on that, which was very helpful, based on that, we are in the process of drafting the written justification. On the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, we still have some work to do. We haven't, we're still fact-finding and haven't actually started drafting the written justification on that one. The elevator improvements, that one's basically done. If you're familiar with that one, is it Parkhurst? Am I remembering the name of the facility correctly?
Pinecrest.
Pinecrest, darn it, so close. So that one, as you may recall, there's an elevator, I think that's been shut down for some period of time. The request is for funds to fix that elevator. We think that that project should be eligible without any problem. We would like to be able to say in the, in the eligibility and the justification that one of the advantages of putting the second elevator back into service is that during periods of high cross-transmission of disease, that then a capacity limit could be put on the elevators. And assuming that's good, I think that, you know, then we have a great strong justification for that one. So we're just waiting for an answer back on whether that's, whether that's possible. And the computer equipment, I believe that one's done. We did receive, I think this week, I think it's three, new requests that we just started on, they're all smaller in natures, if I remember correctly.
Can you refresh us, Mike, on what those three were?
There, there are some for which questionnaires were not previously submitted, but expenditures have already been made. This was discovered after a review of the, of the finance director's files concerning ARP expenditures. I, off the top of my head, I can't rattle them off, but I remember, for example, there were some expenditures related to, to office remodel in the recorder's office. I don't remember the other two right offhand, but those were the, I believe, one of them may have been the medical examiner vehicle, but I'm not sure there's been any expenditure there, so I don't think so. And then, so forgive me for not having those off the top of my head.
That's all right. No, I appreciate it. No, I just thought if you did, that would be helpful. I was gonna say, and they were for items you say that were expensed. We already have expended, but we didn't submit a questionnaire or anything to Baker Tilly?
That's my understanding. And I think part of it may have been due to the fact that we had not even decided to employ a consultant at the time that those projects were initiated and approved.
And just because I realize there are probably many people attending this meeting who aren't familiar with our process, the references to the questionnaire, let me explain that. So as I've said, we have a process that we go through for determining eligibility, and that process starts with a questionnaire that we ask the county staff to complete. And that questionnaire basically mirrors that eligibility framework that I discussed earlier. What's the harm? How does this address the harm? Is it proportional? And that kicks off then a process whereby we go through and look at eligibility and what the proper expenditure category is, and we provide citations from the rules to support it and all that kind of thing. But I just wanted to explain what the reference to the questionnaire was about.
Thank you, Tom. Because it seems to me like that's maybe where we need to go back, as our committees kind of discussed already, to kind of capture those projects and where we're at in that status, and if we need to submit questionnaires, or if they have been submitted and they're here in the courthouse and just haven't been submitted to Baker Tilly or whatever.
And this is exactly what that is. Recall that when the committee was initially formed, one of the things was to go back and re-review, if you will, projects that were already submitted, or I'm sorry, already approved, and in some cases where expenses had begun. For one reason or another, these particular ones hadn't had questionnaires submitted. And so that was, that's part of what the, the committee expedited upon noting that.
Thank you.
And there's, there's good advantage to that practice. I mean, the, our eligibility review tool is designed basically to put everything you need regarding a project and its eligibility all in one place. So by going back and picking up some of these maybe smaller projects that were completed prior to our being engaged, you know, you're building up your file. So you'll have this file essentially of, you know, your questionnaire or your, your project eligibility justification for each of your projects. And should anyone have any questions about why something was done with the American Rescue Plan Award, you've got all of your documentation all in one place.
Well, and I think at one point in time, then, we kind of halted projects from the county's perspective of things that we were looking at until we found out where we were with Phase One and Phase Two. And so very possibly, we have other projects that the county should be considering, not just external audiences as well. So we need to get back on track with that, I guess.
Yeah, and clearly, I mean, we, I just want to reiterate something we said kind of at the very beginning of our conversation about, you know, we have facilitated discussions with other communities in terms of how they want to expend their award. And if, you know, you're interested in exploring some sort of facilitated discussion, we're happy to discuss it.
What do you need from us to get to that point, if that's what we need to do or want to do?
Probably access to you as the leaders and a conversation around, you know, various approaches and what approach might be most comfortable for you.
Okay. Thank you. Five different opinions on that, probably. So how's that work?
Yeah, yeah. It's never, it's never easy, but sometimes.
Yeah, well, I know you say there's plenty of time, but when, there is a certain amount of time that's required to plan and to give us a comfort level, I think that we're working in the right direction and have considered things.
With some governing bodies, what we can do, just to kind of help, we can kind of, remember, I alluded to kind of sort of that continuum at the beginning, we can show you what some processes might look like at various points on that continuum, and then you can say, yeah, okay, we think this process or something like this process, this one meets our community. And with some governing bodies, that's kind of been helpful to coalesce around an approach.
And when you say you can show us that, is meaning you could, you could send us something so we'd see that, or you could?
Yeah, we can, we can basically, you know, provide you something in writing that describes, you know, various approaches, and then you can tell us which one you think is closest, and we can tweak it from there, if that's helpful.
It might be, might, yeah. Everything's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mike, you have any more questions?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Traka?
Nope.
Actually, I do have a question.
Oh.
You have a question, Tom. With regard to the, the comment you made about the elevator, that you need confirmation that we can place a capacity limit during times of high transmission, how do you need that communicated? Because I think that's a pretty easy yes. I think our Health Department.
We've got, yeah, we've got the question out. If you, Mike, if you could just, you know, maybe remind whoever needs reminding to respond. Once we have that confirmation, we're good to go.
You bet, you bet. Will do.
Conservation, you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Mike, I mean, Mike, I'm sorry, but, sorry, Greg. I was just gonna say, Tom, one of the questions, like, and we threw out the proposal of possibly considering a new building for the Public Health Department. If we were to do a renovation, or if it were something like that as well, that could also be a project we want to consider. Okay, it's just however we'd like to approach it? All right.
Sure.
Just wanted to make sure.
Any, you know, any and all of those are gonna be capital expenditures over a million. So, you know, they'll all necessitate a written justification, but, and, you know, we'll have to go through something similar to what we're going through right now for the evidence intake facility where we employ an engineer to come in. Because as you recall, for the written justification, we have to compare it to two other capital expenditure approaches. And so Shai Hattery with the evidence intake facility provided the comparison in terms of cost to the other two approaches. So we would have to do something similar for a public health building, or even whether it was a new building or an expansion.
Sure, thank you. Thank you. Well, it sounds like there's some of the projects we need to go back to our old list and see if the board supports going forward with them.
I agree.
Okay, but that's not yours, that's ours on us. Thank you.
Anything else? Tom, you got anything?
No, it was good information, really. I still think a criteria for me has been and probably will continue is, my feeling the reason why this money was issued to the various municipalities is to take a burden off of taxpayers. And I'm still going to stick to, if we have large projects, is it sustainable? Is it going to cost the taxpayers more money down the road, taking care of it, staffing it and so forth? That kind of defeats a purpose then. So that's one thing that'll probably always be there in the back of my mind when I make a decision. Is it going to cost us tax dollars down the road, how much? And it defeats the purpose of what the money was actually allocated for.
Thank you, Tom. Chris, anything else?
Nope, I appreciate the information.
All right. Anything else to come before us? Tom, appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Anything else to come before us? Entertained motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.